All right, motion to, uh, Lana Warren.
Turn your phone.
All in favor?
And if I were here, a motion to approve the, uh, minutes of January 23rd?
Second.
Except I'm noticeably absent from the
I will fix that Rachel.
President, and I, we thought, in fact, I was absent, and then I noticed that I was
Here.
Very verbal. For an absent person.
Was she here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, so then you have to fix that.
I will fix it, yes, I have.
So that, so the motion is not as written, as corrected.
As corrected in the absentee.
As corrected.
When you're here, you don't know that's important.
That's right. Well, for a moment, I thought, I thought I was there.
You weren't here yet.
So we are going to move up with these liquor license renewal application now, we're going to take that out of turn, discuss all business, so that Sonya can, so.
So no, no changes or anything?
Okay, skip all business for now. Well, um, this is the, the second year we've done what you do, let's see, this isn't your first liquor license for that.
No.
No. Well, it's a different location.
Oh, well.
But I think it's, but I think it's the second one at the new location.
Yeah.
Third one.
Yeah.
That's right here.
Which, you didn't check malt being answered spear to, which one? Which is it gonna be that you're doing? Beer, wine, or all the alcohol, you don't have it checked?
Beer, just beer.
Just beer?
Yeah.
So that malt needs to be checked?
Yeah, needed to be checked.
Do you want me to check it for you?
Yes.
All right, then. Further any other, no objections?
No.
Motion to accept the liquor license.
I make a motion, we accept the application.
Oh, second.
Second, all in favor?
While we're doing that, I'd just like to wish a good friend of mine in St. John de Brunswick, a happy 81st birthday on Valentine's Day. Love you Shirley Williams.
Very good.
I told him to do it, no you're not, no you're not.
I see you, yeah.
One years old, she's a girl, no.
I have a space here, I kind of.
Two sons had birthdays this week.
You do use my month. All right, under old business Rogers Island D E C letter. So.
See you Sonya.
Yeah.
Is this the, this is the final, this one?
It is.
Yeah.
Is it an agreement we have to sign?
Well, it's, they want.
Because I cannot, uh, I have to read it, I can't read, I can't read this now.
There's a couple of different options when I read it today. There's two different options.
I want to table it for next time.
I do.
What, what did you do with it?
Um, they just want, if you skip ahead to page eight, the next step, they have it listed here, before D C C sees further, does the select board want D C C representatives to come to the select board meeting, to answer questions, and discuss the next steps? If the select board advises D C C that the select board is generally in favor of what D C C is recommending in this letter, D C C will prepare the following documents in draft form for the select board view, review and approval. So they mentioned the Audubon Society's recommended do's and don'ts for bird sanctuary on Rogers Island, conservation plan for Rogers Island, list of the tasks to be assigned to the towns and D C C lawyers, estimated legal budget for both the towns and D C C lawyers, draft declaration of trust, form of conservation easement with proposed list of permitted and prohibited conservation uses of Rhode Island. Rogers Island.
Let's check Rhode Island.
Proposed budget of one time and annual cost to maintain Rogers Island in conservation and draft designated fund agreement with M C F. So that's, they just, they're asking for your approval to do their suggestions within this letter.
I have no idea what this is gonna cost, it seems like it's an awful, it's becoming a huge project. At the, at the beginning, I thought it was two or $3,000 we were talking about, and just this letter alone is definitely it's.
But we would know, we would know that cost if we go ahead with their.
Well, I think a lot of this is the history, and then I think what he's doing, though, is protecting us, and protecting the island.
As long as we, yeah, they need to keep this thing.
They're gonna get the estimated legal budget for both the town and D C C, and the proposed budget of one time and annual cost.
And their next step is not the final, so.
And it can't be the next, and we'll have to be meeting after, right? Because you're not gonna be here. So what, so you just want us to agree that they come to a, they set up a town that comes to their meeting?
That they do these next steps.
Right, they come to us and all that.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Do we have a motion that, that we go to the next step, but we definitely need to see a budget?
Yes.
Yeah, I would recommend that we proceed, and with, with the caveat that we get a, a budget.
Rachel, motions?
Second.
All, all in favor?
I, I don't know, I just.
Uh, it's a bit, it's a bit.
We're not, we're not doing that.
Well, it's sketchy.
Yeah.
On page six, just makes my hand stand out.
Well, let me look at page six real quick.
But that's the history.
The top, top three lines.
Let me just look at this here. Did you put this in my box? Can I just go to page eight?
Page six, top three lines.
It was, it was, the town will not provide much money to pay for stewardship, and the principal should be held for the one count, so it's going to Rhode Island. So, Rhode Island, why the town. It's not an annual, it's not an annual income, it is the entire principal.
That's all.
So the thing here, the annual income, oh, from $80,000 will not provide much money to pay for stewardship. It's a little tiny island, I mean, I, I think it's, a lot of this has been making.
It's like grandiose.
Yes, I feel, I, yeah, I feel, yeah.
They want, they know the history with how money was removed from this.
Put into the library.
Correct.
Yeah, but that, that. But that was favored by the town, and we did find that.
Sure.
But the town voted. So that's nobody's business.
Yeah.
No.
But the town.
And it is 2%.
It's in the legal court.
You know, $1,500, it's a tiny little island.
Yeah.
How much stewardship do we need? We have this person, this group that wants to make it the end for the, like, the little kayaks.
Mm-hmm.
They're wanting, they're wanting to help us, I think they're making a, not, not a more, I'm sorry.
I think they are, true, and look at this, this document.
Oh, you wanna read it?
Yeah.
They're very thorough, I will read it.
Well, and how much did they try, I don't know, did they?
But it's also very protective, you know?
Well, so they, yeah, remember when we did the garage?
It's all their stuff.
And we went to Sewell.
Yeah, that was there.
I was before my time, and, and all of a sudden, we got stuck in thousands and thousands and thousands of engineering that the town didn't even agree to, so.
The thing that alarms me in this is it didn't spell out.
We are a poor town, and if we can't make enough money with $80,000, then we can't do it.
That's what conveyed the thing.
Then we can't do it.
But, but it's not in here, it's not in this document, but the clambers can still use it.
It's a given, we, we said that, we said that, so that's to stay.
I told them that's true.
And this is still not their.
The clambers can still clam, correct.
Their, their final, we're just saying, keep going and do what you do, it's not costing us anything.
I have written it, so I really can't be any more judgmental, I guess.
Well, I think that the thing, the, um, the response should be, we'd be glad to listen to their proposal, but if the $80,000 principal cannot support the stewardship, we don't have money to put in it from anywhere else.
They understand.
They, yeah.
They want to put it in the community foundation where it can get more interest, so that that's paying for itself.
I'd like to see them come here anyway, so these folks pass the question.
Well, they do, they do with this next step anyway.
About 80.
Didn't we put it in the C D?
It's in a C D.
It's in a C D.
And it doesn't roll over until next December.
The biggest thing is to leave the island alone, you know, the more attention we bring to it by the state.
Unfortunately, the town already voted to do something, but.
Yeah, so let them, let them, as you, as you do.
And that's fine, that's fine. At the annual meeting?
Yeah.
This is what we're doing, we're doing the town voted, put it in conservation. Provided it, it wasn't gonna cost us anything, no $5,000. Well, that's it, yeah, that's fine, $5,000, I know.
But nothing yet, no, then doing this next step doesn't cost anything.
Once this is done, let's leave it alone.
Yeah.
What concerns me is the annual cost of stewardship. What annual cost? Once you put a legal document, it's in stewardship.
Well, that's what they're going to come in.
I mean, what are you gonna do, pay the, the bastard a tool around the one?
That's what they're gonna come and tell us.
It just needs to be spelled out, as long as it doesn't cost the town any money.
Yeah, and I think they're very clear about that.
Yeah, they already say that, that we can't afford it.
And we don't have anybody to go out there and.
And they also, it also says that these next documents are a draft, so we're still, we're still at the next step.
That's a problem, that's right. They're gonna send people out, and that, that they have, I don't know.
Yeah, let's, let them have to.
We need them here to answer your question.
Yeah, they'll be here.
That's for sure. So there is a motion and a second on the floor. And what time, which day are they gonna tell?
I don't think.
I'll put it on your agenda.
P B D.
Oh, P D O P.
So motion and second.
All in favor?
All in favor and opposed?
All right. Karen Burke's local food ordinance, you're on our agenda, Karen.
If we call it the Lubeck.
The Karen Burke ordinance.
Though it has a nice rig to it, right?
There's extra copies up on the sidebar, if anybody wants to put one.
Of the ordinance? Karen, did you, um, follow what they were saying on the news about the local food ordinance that they've done down in Southern Maine, and they're not, not letting, it kind of backfired with one set of people, without being able to sell edibles with C P D or whatever in it?
Kind of us, yeah.
And I just don't, um, we just don't want to go too quickly with it, pardon me?
That's different than this, but I didn't see that.
But it came, but it came, it was, uh, it came from one of these ordinances, because it was on my news last night.
In relation to, uh, the food sovereignty?
The food, oh, yes, yes.
So, you know, we can find out how to make an explanation.
Yeah, that might be good, just to protect yourself, yeah.
To protect the town, and people who are selling, yeah. No, I didn't see that, I wish I had a heads up, I would've looked at it.
Jason, you reviewed this and gave me some comments the other week on it.
No, I agree with you on the, on with the, you know, having the word in, which the marijuana.
Yeah.
You don't want them to be floating around now.
I have a question, does anybody mind if I ask?
No, go ahead.
In the definitions, under food or food products, it says including but not limited to milk or milk products, meat or meat, meat products, poultry or poultry products, doesn't this have to exclude meat products?
No, this is, that, the definition taken from the state is complicated. And it, what it excludes is meat processing facilities.
As my back to, I remember pretty, this started, this whole thing started when this farmer wanted to sell raw milk in a market, and there was a big hoopla about it, and I think it was.
There was kind of a boo hoo.
Yeah, and it grew from there, and, um, so, and so now we have this.
So this means that they can come.
Yes.
And sell their products.
Yes.
And it's a, it's a sort of a unwritten but documented ordinance, that it's between the buyer and the.
Seller.
Seller, and is, does not make the town liable for, uh, any responsibility if.
It's between, to be exact, it's between the food producer and the consumer.
Right.
And that's a 6.3 D N O.
Yeah, yeah, so that's.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward.
No, I think it's good. So, um, what would be an example of meat that's not processed? When you cut up, like, uh, meat, is that not being processed when it's put in that vacuum pack?
We're talking, well, I guess butchering, you know, that type of processing, so.
So what meat wouldn't be butchered?
I'm not sure I will say this in the correct terms, but.
Processing, I think, is sausage type of things.
Processing, the, the, so what, what it doesn't, what this doesn't cover, which I can, it's easier to explain that, is that if I was raising cows, and I wanted to sell beef right at my farm, and, and process the beef myself, so, no, it has to go to and approve the USDA site, which is a main, covered on the main governance.
Right.
So, um, that kind of meat is not allowed in that, with exemption, after the first, um, proposal for the state Food Sovereignty Act and play, because then the USDA stepped in, and then it changed, so then the state's emergency ruling, which is what now this is all based on. So, you could sell baloney sandwiches, make your homemade bread, and, you know, baloney sandwiches, you could sell, um, I don't know, it's just that, the part that's excluded is the, you know, actual.
And what about butcher fish? Because I know the D M R really has a lot of regulations about the fish.
I know, I'm surprised that seafood wasn't eliminated.
That's what I.
This is from the, this is from the state, um, um, back them off, so.
Oh, so you took this ordinance from.
Uh-huh, definitions of the right.
So I couldn't go to a local butcher that wasn't certified by the state and buy a side of beef for my freezer.
Right, say Paul Olson was still raising cows, and he wanted to cut, he couldn't do that, he would have to send his beef out like.
To the process.
Yeah, an examiner or something, yeah.
Yeah.
You can process it yourself.
Yeah.
All right. So say I want to butcher some chickens that I've raised, to have in my own freezer for my consumption over the winter.
That's you.
Yeah, that's you. You can do that.
As long as I'm not selling it.
That's right, yeah.
So I'm not, that's why I don't know what chickens or any of those, I don't know.
Or jams.
I don't know, jam, jam, that would be good, I'm happy about that, um.
Now Karen, on, on the civil enforcement.
Which number is that, Jason?
Uh, section seven, says the town of Lubeck may enforce the provisions of this ordinance. Now, the town of Lubeck really.
Doesn't want to get involved.
Shouldn't really be involved in it.
And it says may.
Right.
And that's if, right, and, and I think I took that from, um, you know, I gave you samples of four of the Chias ordinance, which I have here, I can check and see if that's their language, but, and I urge the town to have a, the town attorney just to read this, it's three pages, you know, before it goes out, but.
Well, we're gonna have to have a public hearing.
Yes, but I need a, a legal opinion.
Did you, did you model this from a state that you had, where it's like?
Yes, I have the state law right here, if anybody wants to see it tonight, to reference it, and, um, I use that and samples from other towns, but especially the Chias, because it was the closest to.
Yeah, so they have one of these.
Uh-huh, and I think you had that from before, that you may have stuff a while back. And that's what they say, uh, let's see, they had that, that's the, I, I have seven.
So this wouldn't include the farmer's, the Lubeck market, because it, it has to be at the site of production?
Well, um, it does say.
Number C, directly to consumer transaction, so.
Say that again?
Where are you, Carol?
Um, section two C, a face-to-face transaction involving food or food products at the site of production of those food or food products, meaning you would have to go to the person's house to purchase them, if that's where they're, if that's where they're, um, they're producing.
Tell me where you're reading that.
Oh, that's just.
Under two C, under that.
That is the whole thing, it's this, the whole basis of this ordinance is face-to-face consumer transaction.
I was just talking about, if you can sell directly to the patrons through farm-based sales and buying clubs at farmer's markets, why do you say that excludes farmer's markets?
Because it says it has to be at the site of the production of the food, so if you produce a jam, let's say, two doors away in a house, and then you bring it to a farmer's market, direct producer to consumer transaction is what you're defining in section two C, and I believe the whole ordinance is based on producer is face-to-face transaction, but if it, if the definition, definition is at the site of production, then nobody coming to a farmer's market is at the site of production, except, um, Old Pro Farms, who is right there taking the vegetables out and selling them on the side of the road, then it's the, I'm just not being devil's advocate here, but.
No, you're right, you're right.
So the first law, as I understand it, was real clear about, about this. The second law, when they did the emergency ruling because of the USDA issue, um, it's less clear, but it still includes community social events and, um, local foodways in the new law, which is taken to mean such as farmer's markets, in the first law, that was part of the definition.
Well, doesn't, doesn't C answer that? I might be wrong where it says.
Well, C, C would contradict that.
Home-based sales.
It's contradicting.
Well, I'm thinking it's, I mean, I read it as a hearing as well to it, because it says, any food or food product that is grown, produced, processed, or sold directly to the patrons through farm-based sales, which I'm assuming is C, or traditional foodways including but not limited to farmer's markets, buying clubs.
Where's that? Where's that?
Where's that?
The buy-in of C here.
Well, that's where the local food is, any food or food products that are grown, produced or processed by, these are just definitions, so where is the, um, actual law of, I'm pretty sure we read it, and it said that it had to be face-to-face transaction.
And it, and it is, I just think C is a definition of direct producer, C, which is the local foods, is then bringing into account what it can also do, which is community social events, buying clubs, and farmer's markets.
Okay, so that they're both included?
Yes.
Well, it says producers or processors of local foods. Producers or processors of local foods, and the town of Lubeck are exempt from licensing or.
That makes more sense.
Provided that their products are prepared for and sold in accordance with section two's definitions.
Section two, right.
So section E and section C are different, I, I just.
No, it's just section C is one way you can do it, section E is the other way you can do it.
Yeah, these are definitions, just definitions.
Okay, so you can do it in C or E?
Yes, exactly.
That's just what C and E mean, is what they're.
I like it.
I understand how that would be confusing.
Go to 5.1 and that kind of.
So you don't have to qualify it all, you can't, you don't have to do all A to E, and just one of them has to be.
I'm just asking this, though, in the South Bay, what precipitated this?
I think.
What happened to the USDA that brought this to foreclosure or fruition?
Yeah, no, for, um, I think different groups in Maine have brought this before the legislature originally, it had nothing to do with USDA originally, and so Governor LePape signed into law, but then the USDA, you know, saw it and said, no, because it did not, it included, the language did not exclude this, whatever you call it, the butchering facilities, I'll call them, you know, the, or butchering and that type of exchange of food, of meat products. So then they, then they, that's when the USDA entered this picture, and they, they just changed it to, um, make that exemption.
But did anybody get set, was anybody, no?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Anybody know?
But that's also the.
Because that happened with the fish out in, where was it, Minnesota or Great Lakes somewhere, the, um.
No, no.
People died.
It didn't, it was barely in effect when the USDA stepped in, I haven't, they hadn't, towns hadn't even adopted ordinances yet, um, it's, it's, under the law, the May law changed to say, under the provisions of the federal meat inspection act and the federal poultry products inspection act.
Where are you going on that?
Like, this is the law that.
Oh, that's okay, the May law.
I read that, uh, about a month ago.
Yes, that's when I read that.
The United States Department of Agriculture Food Safety Inspection Service has questioned the state's authority under public law 2017, chapter 250, to enforce the requirements of the state's meat and dairy products inspection and licensing program, and so, it says, because of that, you know, we are, um, we've, no, we've created this.
Okay.
Right.
So this protects the seller, the, the local guy, growing whatever.
Yeah.
This protects them from having to have a license, is that basically what it is?
Yes, yeah, I am, yeah, and they are to, um, inform the consumer of that, you know, with science and morality and all that.
I just.
It allows for more local cottage industries.
Right, I just don't want it to be the other way around, because some of these things can be very ridiculous when it comes to the state.
If you go to five.
They can, um, say one thing and mean something else, and I don't want it to hold, you know, hold down the, our local farmer or whatever.
Go ahead, Jason.
If you go to 5.1 and 5.1A, it spells it out pretty darn good.
I, I, I read that, and it does spell that out, and that is a statement of law that you got from.
5.1.
Uh, John?
So, as asked, I did a doc, I can give you a draft, you know, say something.
Yes, I can, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I hadn't read it, I'm sorry.
And six two talks about, and then six three talks about that the town's not, it's pretty clear.
Go ahead.
Now, I understand from number three, that this would specifically exclude tide mills from the protection of this ordinance?
Say that again, number what?
Tide mills, but this, but that excludes tide mills. They're an endless, they're not in Lubeck.
This is just in Lubeck.
Under E, two E.
They're licensed, they can still have it at farmer's market, that's your question, that's a whole different issue.
So what excludes them from the coverage of the ordinance?
Yeah.
This covers.
Because they have something else.
They don't, they don't need it.
We went through that last time.
Yeah, they have a state license.
The town ordinance covers.
It would be like Vinnie Gartmeier and Albert Briggs, anybody that, um, East Shaw. But tide mill has something totally different, I guess that's why I remembered that this guy somewhere here was trying to sell raw milk at a farmer's market, and he had a customer, and everything was fine, and then somebody raised some hoopla about it, and that, I think, provided the genesis for all of this, and then, pretty soon, the USDA gets involved and.
Well, I think they were trying to, somebody was trying to sue somebody, and then that was gonna ruin the entire.
No, I thought.
They were just milking it.
They're milking it to death, right, yes.
It's my understanding, I'm no expert in this, that there are a number of states that have a similar, um, law now, and then last I checked, there were over 43 towns in Maine that have a Food Sovereignty Ordinance now, based on the law.
How many?
Forty-three.
That's great.
So the step.
And this is just for the municipality of Lubeck, right?
Correct.
Everybody would get their own particular thing. I, I think it's wonderful for people like Vinnie Gartmeier and Albert Briggs, and stuff like that, that they can just grow vegetables, sell them out of there, and it's all good.
So do, do we need a motion to have our lawyer look at this? I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah, third.
All in favor?
I'm still hoping for the, just to go to the public hearing in March.
Well, it's, I think we're trying to put it with other things that have to go to special town meetings, I mean, we can do a public hearing in March, but I, I'm not, I mean, we can do a public hearing in March, but I, I'm not, it's expensive for us to do a special town meeting without just one.
But we're going to promote any for the sixth, though, right?
I'm just asking, I understand about the.
We could do a public hearing, yes. We could do a public hearing, it's just we can't schedule a special town.
They may have multiple public hearings.
Yeah.
There's a lot of edits.
So when do you think a special, do you have any idea of the special town?
What is it?
Not yet.
It's quite a bit, right? It used to be, I don't want to quote the price.
You have to hire a moderator.
You have to hire a moderator, we have to pay for people that are staying to help run it and we've done it before for ordinances, but usually we try to piggyback them on something else and I don't know.
So you put a lot of things in.
Well, at least, at least a couple. I, I don't know, yeah, do we have anything?
Well, the planning board, I mean, you've asked a lot of building ordinance adjustments, so I've asked them to create a whole, you know, a presentation.
Permanent, permanent.
Do you have a, do you have a ballpark idea as to when it might be?
A public hearing can be had anytime. You can have a public hearing. And we were done for March sixth prior to the select.
Well, they're trying to get this passed for the summer, that's the thing.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But it, but you have to, what is it, two hundred dollars and then.
They're thinking March the sixth?
Hundred fifty. Moderator and then two hours for the ballot clerk, something like that.
The ballot clerks and.
It could be five, five hundred dollars.
It'd be five, six hundred dollars for a special town meeting.
So we're talking March the sixth, perhaps?
Twenty-five hundred.
That's what I had penciled in.
Ash Wednesday.
And we're going to do it at five o'clock, right?
Five o'clock here and Sullivan there.
I'll be away, but Felicia will be here.
Oh, you will?
Well, when, when, we probably need to coordinate it with you because you, we won't have anybody to answer the question.
Well, Felicia will.
Felicia, yeah.
She's very, very good with this.
Does she do the ordinance with you?
She has this too.
Oh, yeah.
She can be here tonight, she's working.
Yeah, yes, no, I'm not saying she's not qualified, but you're, you've been presenting it, so you, you want the person that's been working on it here at the public hearing.
Oh, Felicia will know this inside out.
Felicia will leave it up. Okay, so that's fine. The quietite comes out on the twenty-second, so I can get it to them this week. But it's just to announce a public hearing for March sixth at five P M. Prior, that's enough time prior to the select board meeting. Well, we won't be able to do the.
That's because there's women, there's gas on the trees.
Yes. Okay. Public hearing for March sixth at five P M. Just, just for the food ordinance right now.
So, just to be clear, according to my understanding, it would be buggled with other things, you know, at appropriate time for a special town meeting, that's my understanding all along.
And if it's a hearing, then we're going to have to vote to spend the money on this one ordinance. If it's, if, but you need to bring a bunch, I'd say a lot of people coming to the public hearing.
Before it's going to come, if we had to potentially.
If we have a large interest in putting it on a special town meeting and the taxpayers are behind having a separate special town meeting for this alone, if you have a show of twenty, twenty-five people come, because you need twenty-five people just to have a vote at a special town meeting. So if many people come to the public hearing and want a special town meeting, that would give, I believe, the select board the incentive to schedule a special town meeting for this ordinance alone if there's enough taxpayers asking for it. We work for the taxpayer.
Renee said there was something else coming up, where are they at? I mean.
This is not to say that the Vinnie and Alba and the farmer's market would stop existing.
That could be done for the annual town meeting, whatever.
Right. No, we just, we just need a lot of, we need public support to put, to justify the expenditure of a special town meeting without a bunch of people here.
So that was just a preface to me asking if the attorney will be doing it for March sixth?
Yes.
Okay. And what about this edible piece of, you know?
That just came out last night.
So I'll do a little research and see if I can find something to add to this, okay? And I'll send it to you by email.
Or you can put a sticky or.
I can do it tomorrow morning, yeah.
Send whatever. It may not cause the, it may not cause the ordinance to have to be changed at all.
The whole thing with the marijuana and the cannabis and the edibles and all that is evolving faster than we know. I mean, it's like every day it's a new day.
Might be something you have to add.
And so, you know, Augusta will take the lead on that.
So if we have a public hearing on an ordinance, so the ordinance should be finalized before the public hearing, that's my final.
The public hearing is, is to present a proposed ordinance, their feedback and change the ordinance.
And then you have to have another public hearing or another draft.
So.
You'll, you'll send it to the lawyer.
So there's a pay draft.
When we change the ordinance and went to the annual meeting, the ordinance was changed and passed on as, as change, I don't think we have a second public hearing.
Okay, so can I propose that the public hearing be delayed a couple more weeks after the sixth there, so that you have a good solid ordinance that you don't have to go around about such a simple thing? This other edible thing you brought up, Rachel, they, now make sure that the lawyer gets this tight before we bring it to the public because it seems like, you know, it would just be a risk, a time to do it early. I'm all, you know.
And that's not to say that it would be an airtight thing about the marijuana at all. I mean, that's.
Well, we don't know.
But I think this gives, that gives us a little.
We didn't have a second public hearing.
So we're given two options. But I mean, this, this is pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And whatever happens with the marijuana, it shouldn't be into whatever happens here.
Correct. Yeah, I would say it's, it's just something.
Three great papers.
I don't think it means you have to change the ordinance. It's going to be totally separate, the whole marijuana issue, what you said is going to be.
That was just like an agenda of Augusta last night, yeah.
So, I just, I actually know of a CBD that is sold in like regular stores as edible. Those items do not meet the USDA right now requirement, by many standards, as an edible. Caregivers can still sell edibles with CBD in it.
I'm sure.
And they said that they anticipate that the legislature is going to fix the issue around that CBD edible thing on its own, so I don't think it will.
And the issue was it doesn't fall below, it doesn't fall under the food ordinance act.
That's what they were saying. And that those places that sell it as not caregivers aren't licensed to sell edible. They can still sell the oil and that kind of stuff, they just can't sell edible. And they were trying to sell it out of the food ordinance, that's the thing, I think.
Yeah. So you want to go two more weeks, the next one after March sixth, just to be safe?
It's tentative, but it's.
I mean, it shouldn't take more than once.
On March thirteenth?
March twentieth is in the best line of thinking.
On March twentieth, okay.
March twentieth is good.
March twentieth.
Since you don't have a date for a special town meeting, it's a far greater matter.
You're not going to be here? We'll make sure you're here at the special town meeting, that's all. We'll, we'll coordinate, because I'm not going to, I'm going to.
March twentieth, are you not going to be here? It's the spring equinox.
That's a good time, I guess.
So March twentieth.
If you're quick enough, I can.
Renee, if you could communicate with me about.
Why don't we tentatively look if we can do a special town meeting and then work backwards on that other thing? So I, can we do a special town meeting before, we've done it before, before the select board meeting? I can do this, we could do the seventeenth, but what's the next one? May first? If we were able to do a special town meeting on May first, do you think that would be time enough to not destroy everybody's plans? Just for the necotide? So why don't we tentatively see if we can get it all organized from May first and then we can see if we can get the other thing on that date?
And we have, we have time for another.
If we get a good public hearing right now, then we can justify spending money on, on just that ordinance.
What is the number seven? What is that? So we could put that on with the other, number seven on our agenda.
So we're hearing March sixth discussion. Well, that's this, that's what we're doing right now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Karen.
So, March twentieth?
Put in.
And then, and May first, he'll be here then, right? And that's when, well, there'll be a lot of people thinking about it, so we, we'll need twenty-five people to vote to have a form. So we're in sewer bait?
This was a water reading error.
Error. With a motion to accept the water reading error, sewer count three oh seven five zero zero.
Second.
All in favor?
All.
There we go. So you, we had a question about the wastewater treatment plant license renewal. Every five years they have to renew with the D, with the D E P. Permission to release F1, is it called? Which is process sewage into the narrow. But the E, the D E P is very, it's supposedly non-toxic and the D E P.
He had his last page.
The D E P is very regulatory on that, so I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, what is it?
The ad, it's, I forgot to put it in the packet, but it's, it's on the table, right underneath.
Oh, this thing?
That's the ad.
Okay.
Oh, you've got copies of that.
Maine Waste Discharge Permit Application.
So every five years we have to get another one, although, like I said, if going forward, anything put in the paper is going to be run by us, at least told about us, so that we don't get sideswiped by questions from the constituents.
Is this where I can put in my two cents?
Yes, sure.
I, I wrote an anxious letter to, to, it was French, saying, what's going on, you know, who, who wants to start dumping?
Did you put it in the paper?
No, it wasn't intended as an editorial. I asked him, you know, can you find out more about this? And so then he printed this other story, story about the renewing A, applying for a renewal permit. But when I read this, it was not clear that this was a renewal process. It seemed to be a new process to me. And I'm, I'm new here to Lubek, I've only been here a few months and I've been trying to get here for years and I'm finally here. But, but I was concerned about, you know, why, why do they want to start dumping this in the, in the ocean here? And, but he was clear in, in the response that it's a renewal process. And that's what got me all excited in the first place was nowhere in here, nowhere in this, no one says that it's a renewal, a request for renewal, it seemed like a new process to me.
Yeah, yeah. And it's processed before it gets dumped in.
Well, yeah, I'm sure they'd like to say that.
It's actually cleaner than what the U D requires.
Is it?
I was just wanting to find out that it's been going on for twenty-five years, but I guess there's something I can talk about.
Well, everything used to get dumped into.
They watered directly.
Before we had a sewer.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
To me, it just seemed like it was something new. And if they had, if they had put the word renewal somewhere in that.
Yes.
In that statement, then I would have known.
I think that Renee's just got that into point, is that.
Oh, I can't change it, that's from the D E P. They write it for us, so that's all I do, is just put it in the paper. Yeah, they, they have the time.
I say it was sort of cleared up before, before your meeting ever happened.
It's as clear as the water going back in the bay.
Well, I flagged down Fort Carroll in the grocery store and said, hey, you got one?
I'm like, well, wouldn't you check into that?
She took it seriously and I, I just.
I did, I did.
I owed it to everybody to come back and say, no, I, I didn't do it.
We're glad that you're concerned. We'd rather have somebody here asking questions than being upset about what they don't know.
It's been addressed and answered, so.
Thank you.
Not, not really an issue anymore.
I'm very glad you heard that. Very, now we have some happy news. Accept bid for the ambulance, two thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Yes.
So do we have a motion to accept this bid?
I move that we accept the bid.
Second? All in favor? Now, I understand that in order for us to allow this money to go into the fire association, it has to be a town vote. That is something we could put on a special town meeting.
There you go.
Already in the works. So we do have two things. Looks good now, we'll keep looking better for May first. Our board letter, okay? Yes. There was a letter sent by, a second letter.
You know, not that I'm president of Lubek Landmarks anymore.
So if you're going to say anything, you're going to have to.
No, this is an observation as a selectman, that this is a pretty cheesy letter when you have to cross out the original date and put in, update it.
You can blame me for that.
Oh.
And the harbor board, the harbor board, hi cheese.
Because that wasn't.
She is the big cheese, you know.
That wasn't found out until they went to the harbor board and in order to get five signatures, it had to be crossed out.
Oh.
But we have to pay a three hundred dollar lawyer an hour if you'd like to have it written.
That's whatever, whoever likes to type things out.
Don't get those funds into maybe significantly.
Yeah.
Name of the man now.
Oh.
Actually, it was me. It's my typo, I'll take blame for that.
Make sure that they're all accepting for.
Yes, second that.
Where is the letter? I went to read it.
It's the same one that was written last year.
Well, so you don't want the town to know that in fact they're getting notification of the building?
What?
So what, does Gary want to? I think it needs to be.
Could you explain what you're talking about?
Yeah. Says here, the harbor board sent a letter to Lubek Landmarks for the smokehouse deeds that was inspected and it's significantly deteriorated and they're concerned that the structure is unstable and in dire need of repair and a collapse of the building would result in a catastrophic navigational hazard, as we've already seen. The situation cannot be tolerated any longer and they would like, the town would like the structure to be abated by June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. And we've sent some similar letters to the building that it no longer exists. And the town cannot be liable and has to notify owners of deterioration. It's our responsibility. It's not our responsibility to correct it, though. It's only to notify.
This was written by the harbor board, Karen.
Because they're on pilings and so it's not the code enforcement officers, well, actually it is as well, but it's more, the damage would be done on the water, so that's why. That's why it came from the harbor board and the harbor board was adamant about not having a repeat performance of floating buildings. So, sorry about the date. I don't know what that is. May twenty, foundation grant.
So, senior doctor. This is, um, the lady, a while ago I mentioned that somebody at the May community foundation had contacted us about a beautification monies, like for the banners and I had to come up with ideas. And we were awarded it, she said that the check would be mailed out tomorrow and this is the breakdown. Fifteen hundred is to go for the banners that needed to be replaced down Water Street, the Lubek main banners are getting tattered and torn and very expensive.
You decided it?
The Stockford Park dedication stone setting.
Wonderful.
So twelve hundred and fifty dollars going for that.
That's great.
And a hundred dollars to the garden club for perennial.
So we're finally going to get this park dedication stone setting? We've been waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting.
You guys do have the authority to accept money in donation and put it in its intended place, so like you don't.
So.
Make that a motion and we give this.
Is this perennial's definite?
Yes, they don't want it sent for annual, they want it for flowers that come back.
Okay.
Like coster or lilies.
Makes sense.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Very good job, could you do that?
They volunteered.
No, I took the phone call. Okay, then you.
Nice.
Nice.
But we came up with the ideas for the beautification.
They have anybody, this, like a mason that's ready.
He must have a very nice secret question.
In line to do that, stone setting?
I know that Denise was talking to Michael Scovani and he was volunteering. And then we were looking to, we didn't have a person who knew enough about granite. And then somebody suggested that we go to a gravestone person.
That's a totally perfect idea.
Yes.
They would know how to set that in a stone.
But we're going to set it in the stone that's right in front of.
So it'll be set in stone, yeah.
Yeah, and I talked to Mike recently about it, they had, he has a perfect stone that can be cut, he can do it and he's going to volunteer his time.
Sam, what do you need the money, what's the money for then?
To help set, decorate the base and whatever.
Well, he'll have so much more time now. One that's already there in front of the.
Well, I don't think that stone was big enough. It wasn't big enough and I went out and measured it. Well, I don't think that stone was big enough, 'cause I think John and I went out and measured the plaque.
I thought the slab was donated, was gonna be donated.
We have a slab.
Oh, I mean, I don't know. Concrete slab for the stone, I thought that was gonna be donated.
I think, yeah, I think it came from.
I remember who was gonna do it, too.
That's how I remember it. Looked that way when you say.
So you, you won't spend more money than you need, or you can put it on something else.
And I'm still on board to do that.
So maybe by this summer, it'll be done, public hearing.
Oh, that should happen, yeah.
Treasure to represent Quebec on, oh, yes. The bill is coming back up again for the foreclosures on homes of the elderly citizens that would have to wait thirty, like a long time. It can be up to thirty years before you can actually foreclose, depending on the value of the home. Suzette has volunteered to go and represent the town again, along with Bucket Davis from East Machias. So we, she, we're very happy that she would like to go.
Yeah.
So we need a motion to let her, allow her to go.
Motion for her to go, yeah, she was very knowledgeable when that came up the first time. I'll second that part.
All, all in favor? Oh, dear, dear. Mike Scovani has resigned on, from the Marion Transfer Station Board and we need a new appointment.
Make a motion, we, put in the old boy over here? Yes, second.
All in favor?
I was a little quick.
Hey, John, Jason, yes.
Hey, if you mind me saying, no waste getting that done.
Yes, the plan had all came out well.
That Mike has done a great job.
I was gonna say, spent years doing that, all of it, very much.
Thank you, Mike, for the plaque.
Good, Michael.
And when we reconvene for the recycling, you'll need to come and give a report to us. Yes, okay.
Other business?
I have one other appointment.
Uh, for the sixth.
Thank you.
Um, you had, just put it on an old business, but at one time had suggested somebody for the Board of Appeals vacancy. I did approach that, asked that person, they declined it. I noticed in our, in minutes that I was looking through that Nancy Begley wants to run that, and I did call her and she's willing.
Oh, Nancy.
Phil, Phil, to make an appointment, we want to appoint Nancy Begley to the Board of Appeals.
Make that a motion, second that.
All in favor?
Oh, good.
Well, that's good, you know.
Imagine that, Karen.
He didn't have to sign that.
No.
I signed it anyway and forget it's my name on it. I can swear to it, Jason.
Wow. Ready updates?
Update I have from the harbor board is, the crane was broken.
Uh, I'm sure it's fixed again.
Yeah, we spoke about it, they, I guess.
Really need to have a lesson in how to operate the hoist.
You probably know more about it than I do. I just knew it was, I didn't, I knew there was some.
Harbor Board's gonna be on the February twenty-fifth at six this week, because the eighteenth is President's Day. So it's gonna be the fourth Monday, but then March goes back to the third Monday.
You know when St. Harbor's gonna be ahead of that, I asked you.
Yes, the next St. Harbor's gonna be March eighteenth, an hour before the harbor board meeting. There's not gonna be a meeting in February because, because we don't have any information, we wanna come back with a Fisherman Forum feedback.
Full of information.
Full, yes, full of information. It's gonna be, it's gonna be at five.
Harbor Board.
No, it's gonna be, it's, there's no holiday, it's gonna be on the eighth. So, uh, let's see.
Down East D M S is March eighteenth at four thirty, Med Events Hall. I just have to say one thing, this ambulance authority is really up and thriving, it's really doing really well.
That's a wonderful.
And if anybody would like to join a really up and coming business, I call it a business, it's been really running like a business. They need drivers, they need E M Ts, they need paramedics, we need everybody. Cause there's some things going on that I believe that we may be looking for hire, so. They won't hire me as a driver, they say I drive too fast.
No.
Yes.
I can vote for that.
Can imagine. There she goes.
Any meetings?
Well, Recycle will be meeting in April, 'cause we decided to do it quarterly and.
Economic development?
The economic developments, we have more people interested and Mr. Llewellyn is interested in coming and talking to us. So we are looking to meet this coming week and I'm just, I don't know when we can come up here, I have to look at the calendar and then.
Next week we'll have to leave. This week?
Oh, next week, I'm sorry, sorry, next week, starting February eleventh, sometime that week.
Mine's still working.
So if you wanna, you know, let us, I'll let you know, put it on Facebook, on the Community Building Board, which.
Exactly.
Dan, you were in a meeting yesterday.
We're vowing loan, yes, we've had some activity, so please remember that opportunity is available for you. Please check the town website, we meet once a month and applications and information are at the town office. Our next meeting is the fifth at three o'clock. So any interested parties, we also have a meeting next Wednesday, A O S at Hot Committee, committee here.
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock, right here.
So once in the thirteen?
Yes.
At four o'clock.
And very much please, if you have any interest regarding our children and the processes thereof with the A O S and things, please come to the meeting and, you know, voice some of your concerns, opinions, as we move forward looking into this issue.
And Shellfish is March fourth at six, first Monday of the month.
Joanne, when is the Chamber of Commerce meeting?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
February twenty-four.
And where is that?
Here.
It's gonna be here now?
Oh, it's gonna be?
Sunday?
It's Sunday, it's, they've contacted you, right? It's gonna be here?
At two o'clock?
At two o'clock, it's on a Sunday, at two o'clock. I, I offered the community building, just it's gotten so big that we.
Right.
Here, we gotta.
Yeah, that's fine, that's good. Public comment? Well, thank everybody for coming and.
I moved it me a turn.
Yes, I was looking for one of those. All in favor?
They sent them, I ordered.
Yeah, no.
She's not on, she's not on my desk.
I'm not.